It's been a big while.
I'm on my first in a big while.
Six o'clock, time to call the orders of Mount Pleasant Municipal Planning Commission meeting tonight. At this time, if you would stand, please, I have John Hunter do the pledge and Robert do the indication, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God.
Everybody would remain standing by your head. Dear gracious God, we come to you this evening, Lord, thankful for this blessed day that you've given us. Thank you for protection watching over us and our families. Father, we ask that you continue to do that, continue to guide and lead us in the direction you would have us go. As we go into this meeting tonight, Father, we ask that you give wisdom to the board members so they can make the right and just decision for all involved in the community here in Mount Pleasant. We ask for protection when we leave this place. Just thank you for all your many blessings, in Jesus Christ's name we pray.
Amen. Let the minutes reflect that all the members are in here tonight. Item number three is approval of the agenda.
Chairman, if you don't mind, we've got a couple of additions that will need to be added to the agenda. One is going to be the election of officers, this is our first meeting of the year. And the other would be zoning text change concerning our floodplain section in our ordinance. I'll describe that further when we get to it, but I would like to add those to other business if that pleases the board.
We have to have a motion to change this?
Yes.
Okay.
I can add it.
Yeah, I'll make a motion we approve Robert's two items and other business.
I have a, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number four is approval of minutes prior to meeting December the fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion we approve those minutes.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item number five plat approvals, this time I'll turn it to Robert.
Yes, thank all the board members for being present, thank members of the audience for being here as well. Our first item on the agenda is the final plat review PC zero one eleven twenty-two parentheses F P first parentheses dash one. Advocate Alan Blevins, who is here in the audience for this committee, has submitted the final plat for property located at the intersection of North Main Street, Grayland, and Sugar Creek Lane. Of course, it's further identified on tax map one thirty-three parcel nine point zero six. On file and recorded in D book R one four six seven page one oh eight on file, American Register D. The purpose of this plat for the board tonight is to combine lot two with plat book P twelve, page thirty-five to the remaining area of lot one B of plat book P ten, page one forty-eight, and to add a portion of lot two plat book P twelve, page thirty-five to the area of lot three as shown on plat book P twenty-two, page three forty-nine for a total acreage of seven point oh five. And of course, when this came before us, we reviewed, as we always do, the final plats and we addressed some issues, comments were included in the reply from the surveyor who had actually done the work on the plat. I'll go over those at the board, don't mind.
Not a problem.
Go ahead.
On behalf of Alan Blevins and teaching property owners of these two existing lots, West Engineering and surveyors would like to present the final plat to City Mount Pleasant Planning Commission. Comments are addressed in red, as you see. Correct tax map, the first issue we addressed, correct tax map information on Williams Streamer Home Lot two nine point ten. And that was indicated in the recent middle, so that was corrected. The tax map information has been updated. The second item we listed was, we asked them to correct note seven to reflect other lots shown on plat. And note seven references the parcels that are being modified, is what the surveyor indicated to us. So that is a correct address to the comment there. Own three note, comment three building setbacks omitted from lot two revised. And on the revision, of course, the recent middle setbacks are shown on lot two. Correct lot acreage in note six. Of course, the correction was made and lot acreage shows the total for lots two and three. Name and address of owner omitted, they were added to the survey. And correct development summary to reflect current map and parcel number for current ownership. That was a reflection of some of the earlier comments that you've seen, so the development summary had to be updated on the survey, as you see. So they have successfully made those necessary corrections to the plat. The plat was made up subdivision rate in our home ordinance, as it is presented tonight, based on the revised updated version that you see before you.
All right.
And Mr. Blevins is here, as well as representatives from West Engineering, Mr. Gerald Vick. He didn't do the survey, but he's well aware of the survey, if anybody has any questions for them. And I'll be glad to answer anything I can from the board.
Anything from the board? If not, I entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion we approve the final plat.
I have a motion.
I'll second it.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Part of the full government next time. The, let's see.
Go ahead.
Number six rezoning request.
There are none.
Number seven annexation request.
There are none.
Number eight site plan request.
Site plan before you tonight is PC zero one eleven twenty-two parentheses S P close parentheses one, or S P one close parentheses. This actually came before the board, probably a year, maybe a year and a half ago. It was, it's called the Athena Project, I don't know if that rings any bells with the board. But they had presented a site plan to us that is expired. The recent middle is here before the board due to that. And applicant Rich Roberts and West Engineering, Mr. Gerald Vick is here. Mr. Roberts, okay. But they've submitted, they've resubmitted the site plan for development of lot located at three fifteen Joe Frank Porter Road, which is trapped forward in Cherry Glen. So it's situated at the corner of Joe Frank Porter and Charles T. Shur behind Doug Jeff. Of course, you've got the tax identification listed on the agenda. The purpose is to further redevelop the lot for future construction of a thirty-one thousand square foot facility. And the development comes in the form of the site plan. And of course, if y'all want to flip over to the comments there, we can look at those together and go over them. The revision and recent middle, as indicated, on behalf of the property owners, West Engineering and surveyors, would like to resubmit the site plan for the proposed investment development, as well as the attached information response to comments received from the city. Comments are addressed in green. The dimensions of the building were missing on the site plan, they have now been added at the recent middle. The loading docks the same, there was loading docks indicated. And we requested that the dock dimensions be represented on the site plan as well, they have been added. We asked that the engineer identify lighting on loading dock areas. We also further indicated wall package lights should be, should be used, they need to have fully shielded fixtures. Response to that was, and it's on the, it's on the plan itself on the site plan as a note, referred to the pro-site lighting. Exterior lighting to be wall package lights and will have fully shielded fixtures, location specification to others. So that was corrected and notated on the site plan. The comment forwards, please identify location and height of light poles in Victor parking area, light poles shall not exceed twenty feet in height. They have not represented, nor did they intend to have light poles there on the site plan that's presented to you. Once again, they do have fully shielded packaged light on, on the facility in and of itself. In our zoning ordinance, if I'm not mistaken, it says anything over ten parking spaces need to have light poles for the parking area. I don't. And maybe you know a little bit more about the project at this point, I don't know exactly what it's going to be built to be. I know it's just an industrial facility at this point. But I don't know what kind of manufacturing they'll be doing, or what kind of parking arrangement or anything like that it's going to be. It is part of the required in our zoning ordinance now, you as the planning commission can weigh in on that, y'all have the ability to do that. You know, if that's something that y'all do not see the need for, light poles in the parking area, then you can approve the site plan as presented, but it does call out our zoning ordinance, anything over real. I had got the zoning ordinance in front of me, if you can hear me, I think it's anything over ten parking spaces. As far as parking lot lighting, as well as islands. But I don't know that the engineer knows what the type of facility or the parking arrangement is going to be at this point.
Are they going to have three shifts?
I have no idea. That, that, the site plan that's presented is for the development of the property, because it has no building there. So I don't, I haven't spoken specifically with Mr. Rich Roberts. I don't know if this is going to be a big building that he is trying to lease. Are you KCS?
I'm KCS, we're the, we'll be the people working on the building.
Okay.
It is not deemed.
If you was, if you were standing, you'd just be in the microphone.
My name is Alan Nicol with KCS. And the building is going to be for investment and it'll be for future tenant, and they don't know who that tenant will be at this point in time.
Basically a spec building.
It'll be a spec building, yes sir.
Thank you for clarifying my position. What have we required of the other spec buildings?
I'm sorry.
What have we required of the other spec buildings this long?
Smolts and Shram was a spec building.
I just think we should be consistent.
And I hate to say this, I can't recall on the spec side, because it was a build, it was a build out after the spec building.
Right, yeah.
I know we had them do site work, we had them do drainage, we had them do underground drainage and retention area. But I don't know that we required parking lots just simply because we didn't know exactly what the facility was going to be, or the parking arrangement for that matter. It's, so zoning ordinance says that anything over ten spots in a parking lot need to have lights. But you have to have, you almost have to have a parking arrangement to justify where those islands are going to be and the light fixtures are actually going, going to be. Now, that being said, y'all won't see this again on the development side. Well, no, you won't see this because the site plan, once it gets approved, then it's approved. So the building could then be built with just a building permit, if I'm not mistaken. So keep that under consideration as we go throughout the remainder of the comments, we'll come back to it. But the facility not knowing what it's going to be, the parking arrangement not knowing that, it's hard to locate islands for light fixtures when you don't know the parking arrangement of this.
But then when they do know, do we have the opportunity for? You don't. Don't think.
Does this hold true for everything, as far as you say more than ten parking spaces have to have light pole?
I think the zoning ordinance says ten, I don't have this.
I think, I think we need to follow up on that because, you know, I know a couple of areas recently, that's not the case.
Okay, okay.
Is it based on what the zone is out there in Cherry Glen?
They put the wall packs up and.
To eliminate the lot? Yeah.
The wall packs, and Mr. Vick could probably speak to the wall packs, as far as the specificity of the wall packs. But going back to Smolts and Shram, it being a spec building, I don't believe that we required lighting on the parking lot because we didn't have a tenant at that point. But they did have packaged wall.
Right, right.
To eliminate the parking area, so he might be able to better speak to the light arrangement.
Oh, I'm Gerald Vick with WS Engineers of Columbia. I will say that we do have a, a parking configuration shown on the plan, but that's what's proposed. The only, the only code as far as lighting the parking lot would be, you know, adequate lighting and then it has to meet a certain criteria for the ADA spaces. And that all can easily be handled with wall packs, you know, from the building. You know, with the orientation of the parking, there shouldn't be a problem. But, and, you know, that's kind of, you know, that was our approach for it, is, is that, I know, I can't speak for everything that y'all approved in that area. I did quickly look on Google Streets and the spec building across, across the Joe Frank Porter is, did not show any light poles. But the one next to us on the, would be on, I guess, the northeast, did have light poles in the parking lot, which is an older building, it's been there for a long period of time. I don't know about the new building behind it here, whether or not it has had light poles, spec or not. I didn't, I didn't realize, I was thinking that the ordinance said that it required it to be lit, not, didn't realize that it was saying it had to have toll.
And without verifying that, I could, I probably misspoke in relation to that, the adequate lighting for the parking lot.
Yes.
Robert, I'm, I'm looking at the zoning ordinance, can I just share it with you?
Please.
Does that help you?
Yes.
So, oh, I guess I'm not allowed. That's okay, but on page, page eleven dash twenty-two, it does require parking lots, if they can spaces to be lighted. There's also a requirement for wall packs to be shielded so that the glare doesn't go, you know, a significant distance, that can be an issue even in rural areas where the next residence might not be very close by. But that light is visible for a while to be distracting. So, but at the same time, understanding the need for flexibility here, it could be a condition of approval that's required prior to a certificate of occupancy. Because you're right, you're, you're kind of in a situation where the parking may need to be expanded depending on the tenant. And when that parking lot is extended, is expanded and finalized, maybe that's the best time to address the lighting.
Makes sense.
Maybe, but if they're running through shifts, then.
Well, they don't know what it's going to be.
I know, but I'm saying, once we pass that.
But they said they would address it when it come up.
Can we do that? Yeah.
Yeah.
There may not even be shifts.
Right.
I know, but I'm just saying.
If there's an extension of the parking lot, yes, it would have to be removed.
It might not even be open.
Yeah. Wall packs that suffice for the extension of the parking.
Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Thank you, Will.
So I misspoke, I apologize.
Not a problem.
No, I don't think.
There's only so much I can hold in this hand.
It is a little.
I'm glad, I'm glad to clarify it. So that being said, the wall packs and the parking configuration that Vick has shown would adequately light the area of the parking. If, you know, upon extension, we had to add additional lighting, then that would definitely come back to the planning commission.
Right, there'd be a change in the site plan.
That's right, yes. But going on, unless y'all.
No, no, it's fine, go ahead, pincher.
The, the, I think we're on five, we're going to five here. Irrigation plans are not included, they wasn't included into the site plan. Alternatives, alternatives to irrigation must be approved by the planning commission. The alternative that we'll be discussing tonight is frostproof hydrants, some are located on the building. You have them on the site plan that's shown, different locations, they're on the building, they're actually in the yard. The requirement for the frostproof hydrants comes in and has to be within a hundred feet of a landscape bed. And the locations that they've put them, indicated on the site plan, will be clearly substantial and in the vicinity of the beds. The planning commission has the ability to approve that outside of the underground irrigation.
True.
And they have sufficed by adding those wall hydrants and locations that would, that would be useful as landscape beds. Number six buildings with lengths in excess of forty feet should have ten-foot wide planting beds with a mixture of warm and freeze, taller greens, and range of shrub sizes. Site plan identifies Emerald, Emerald Green, I'm not even going to try that word, and dwarf burning bushes with an eighteen to twenty-four inch spread in a single line. Planting bed, it is compliant, however, please, we ask that they diversify the foundation planting materials to include ornamental trees and evergreens of the minimum height six foot. They addressed this by adding several ornamental trees to the area in question on the landscape plan of the site plan. Of course, it's up here on the, the native trees and location were indicated. Number seven, eighteen inch dwarf burning bush shrubs are specified on the site, burning bushes considered invasive species should be replaced with different species. Engineer coming back, proposed dwarf burning bush shrubs have been replaced with different species on the landscape plan, they have. So as to this office presenting this to the planning commission, the site plan is sufficient with our regulations for site plan and the building architecture applies to design review, so.
All right, any questions from the board?
The only thing I have, Robert, is on here, it's in asphalt pavement C details on sheet C five for the parking lot and the road. Has your office already seen those, or?
What is, what, what page do you go?
On the very first plaque right here, it says C sheet C five, it's not included in the packet for the asphalt paving and the concrete.
No, 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 we have not seen the details on that.
I believe it missed calls out the number, it should be, the asphalt pavement on C four.
I saw one on C four. Yeah, I was thinking, I seen that, I seen that.
So, yeah, the, the details are.
So the six inches is a con, yeah.
Yeah, but the asphalt work is going to be an eight to one and a half section, and then the concrete is six inch section.
Okay.
With monolithed curb.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Not a entertaining motion. Mr. Motion we approve the site plan request? I have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
No.
We have one no.
Y'all, we're not incorporating what Will said, right? This was just a straight approval?
Straight.
Yeah, but because he kind of clarified, we didn't have to worry about.
The lighting.
Is that right?
It's on the minutes, it'll be reflected on minutes coming from me, or coming from Will.
Item number three, Robert?
Yes, sir, it's PC zero one eleven twenty-two parentheses S T P close parentheses. Advocate DTM Enterprise and TKC Architecture have submitted a site plan on the development of two lots located through Locust Street and Walnut Street. Proposal was for future construction of four townhomes on Walnut Street side and four multifamily dwellings on Locust Street side. These two lots have been vacant for quite some time, we're looking at them here. They're just off of First Avenue, close to, I think, Florida, on the opposite side of Ronda, Florida. And this plan has come before us, we've had discussion with the architect, Mr. Cole Newton, I take the engineer, Mr. Cole Newton, who's present in the audience with us. And he, we supplied comments, but we didn't get a revision back from Mr. Newton, who is present in the audience, and those comments are reflected in your pack, I believe.
I went over that.
The big one, I, all right, so yes, the comments, I'll go over those comments and then, and then I'll discuss staff and, and the committee can speak as well. Site plan was committed for review by Mount Pleasant Planning Commission, the townhomes have frontage on both Locust Street and Walnut Street. That consists of eight townhomes, four on each street frontage, the following omission or corrections were noted. First notation on it is common area and stormwater improvements are to be owned and maintained by homeowners association. Association should be chartered by the state of Tennessee and ownership transferred prior issuance of occupancy permit for residential structures. Second comment, the impervious surface ratio, the ISR was omitted, we asked that it be added to the site plan. Irrigation requires multifamily sites, planning commission may waive that requirement, but once again, it goes back to location frostproof hydrants and if the planning commission chooses to still rule that way. No foundation plantings have been shown, ten-foot planning areas will be provided for two-story buildings. A street yard shall be provided with a depth of ten-foot site trees with a minimum of two-point-five caliber trees. Two-point-five inch caliber trees may be planted within this space. These should be camphir or flowering trees selected from approved list of trees in the design review manual. Building materials are illustrated in the front yard, architectural renderings, side and rear yard renderings are omitted. We asked that they provide those side and rear yard renderings. And the last comment, building materials should be specified and writing on front side, front side and rear. Yard views residential structures and comply with specifications, section eight-point-five A and B, page seven of the design review manual. So we sent these comments to the engineer. The engineer is working with a developer, he's conferred with the developer, and, and some of this stuff, the developer's going to have to actually get to the engineer. The architectural elevations and such that you see in there. And this, this site is tight in configuration, so the engineer, myself and him have spoken before the meeting here a couple times. And I think his presence tonight is, just because he presented the site plan, but staff would recommend that it be deferred, there's still some work to be done on the site plan. I know that the, we got some on Walnut Street side, the driveways in Locust Street, I believe. For multifamily development, we don't really want cars that have to back onto a public way. The driveway that's standing directly out into the public way, somebody pulls in, they're pulling out. Kind of hard to turn around and maneuver a vehicle that way, as our ordinance does reflect this in verbiage. So that's something that we want to discuss, both with the engineer in regards to the parking arrangement that he's got there. And once again, this being a tight area that he's dealing with, he kind of wanted to hear the planning commission's reference and maybe a little discussion on some of these items tonight. And that's why his presence is here, and he'd be glad to answer any questions or any concerns. Plan commission may have, so when he goes back to the drawing board, kind of has a handle on, you know, what's expected. He knows by the zoning ordinance, he's very familiar with our zoning ordinance, and he realizes this is a tight spot. So he's worked with what he's had and that's what's presented, but it still is in need of some fine tuning and maybe some reconfiguration on some different things before maybe some reconfiguration on some different things before we're, uh, at a satisfactory point with it, as far as my office is concerned. It's been looked at a couple times, but, um, he would certainly entertain, if the board would so entertain, a discussion, uh, tonight on the site plan. But other than that, uh, that's what's been presented tonight. Like I said, it just needs some work on it and he's well aware of that and, uh, we will have future discussions after this meeting, but, um, uh, is there anything in particular that, uh, anybody from the planning commission has seen, uh, on the plans? And I know you've got the packets late and I apologize again, but, um, um, you know, other than the comments that we've already addressed, uh, the area is pretty flat. Uh, he did provide drainage calculations. Uh, they don't change too much, uh, pre and post. Um, so he's, he's worked with the site, um, I think, in a fair manner, uh, considering what he's got to work with. Um, but, um, the parking arrangement kind of concerned us and we just wanna make sure that that along with these other comments can be addressed efficiently for both the developer and engineer, getting the engineers something to work with. But like I said, he's here and he'd love to, um, answer any questions that the board may have, um.
Well, but I would always ask, and, um, like was gonna do tonight, one of the issues that I'm looking at with Daddy is that's gonna be another one of our streets that probably wouldn't end up being a one of those streets, because I don't even think this eight feet wide. You can't, you, you know what, yeah.
You are correct. Walnut Street is a, is a, is a, is a narrow street and, uh.
I mean, you'd be lucky to get the five truck of that street with nothing.
Yeah. And that was, uh, that was one of our main concerns, especially on Walnut Street seven, you're backing out. It's gonna be more of a congested area. Uh, I know it wasn't addressed in the initial comments, uh, but it has been discussed with the engineer and, uh, uh, it's been discussed, uh, between myself and the rest of the staff.
This is, this is something that could be worked out that, you know, if it's approved later on, you know, because I know that you're.
I think it would be beneficial. I, I, I just, like I said, I, and the engineer is well aware of it. Uh, he, he knows that what he had to work with was very tight, so, uh.
Even if you had to have a knee dress on Locust and ingress on Walnut, you know, and.
Yeah, it'd be a big improvement to the area because, I mean, it'd be important to.
Yeah.
Improve the area.
Right.
But, like I said, that was my only concern, because I did go look.
Mm-hmm. Well, thank you for joining us.
Call us on codes, kind of that way.
Yeah.
Five way seven where they gotta back way out, front way in.
Right, right.
Would y'all like to ask any questions to the engineer? Uh, he's here.
Does the board have anything they'd like to ask the engineer on this project?
I think, I mean, we're, we're, uh, working with the engineer for sure, uh, and, um, he's just kinda, uh.
I think we need to address the Walnut Street issue, because I think Walnut will be, be an issue.
Yeah.
Like, act as the vote.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I, I asked a couple of questions. Good evening, everybody. My name's Cole Newton, civil engineer with TKC Architecture Engineering. We do architecture and engineering, but we're not doing the architecture on this. So, I mean, I think that's one of the reasons we didn't address the comments and when Robert and I talked and that kinda kicked that back on the client a little bit to see what his plan is there. Um, you know, the site is tight on, on Walnut. We are, we are proposing to widen that street, eight, making an eight foot lane on our side. But again, that'd only leave, you know, one eight foot lane and one four foot lane. So, I mean, you know, we came in and met with staff a month or two ago when we first started looking at this and looked at configurations where you turn the buildings and run them that way and you almost do a pass through between Locust and Walnut and drop the parking in. And, you know, you know, we got to this point, I think, trying to keep it, um, a neighborhood feel with the frontages still on, frontage on Locust and frontage on Walnut. And trying to create that, still have that single family where they act as a single family, look like a single family, even though they're duplexes or townhomes.
Right.
And you, you know, backing straight out onto the, on the Locust or Walnut. Again, I mean, we're not, we're not creating any more traffic per unit than, than you would at a single family. And so, you know, the traffic movement of backing out again is something we just wanted to talk about. I mean, again, we've looked at two options, ch- turning them and running all the units this way versus, versus the way we've got it. Um, with the foundation plannings on the, it really, I, I mean, I think our landscape plan shows foundation plannings in a few places, but we are asking for a variance for the, the, um, zoning code calls for a ten foot side yard, I guess, landscape area setback, whatever you wanna call it. Um, when you're more dense than your neighbors. And so, we're, we are gonna be more dense than our neighbors. So, we were asking for a five foot sides variance there to put a six foot privacy fence in. We put some plantings in, but dude, instead of, instead of with the plantings, it'd be a, we want five feet back and then the six foot fence.
Right.
Um, but I mean, we can, we can, you know, it, it, you know, it's, and then, you know, we'll be back before y'all hopefully next month with the plan and I'll get with Robert on, on like what the best thing is. What the city wants to see. I mean, it's a struggle, a struggle for me from an architectural standpoint, and we're not doing that piece of it, but when you turn them and, and you, and you run them and you do the pass through between Locust and Walnut, it just feels like you're creating something that's not there as far as the neighborhood and you've already got those single families and when you've got them facing, facing the road like that and you've got people walking down the sidewalks.
Oh, I like what you're doing. It, it, it was just like I said, down the conversation, we got this street being for now.
Some type of cul-de-sac, I mean, if you look at something like that, like a cul-de-sac in there.
Just not a lot of room. I think if, I think if we did, I think the, you know, I mean, you start putting a cul-de-sac in, I think you'd be better off, it, it would be cleaner to have a pass through than a cul-de-sac, but we'll, we'll look at it.
I, I think if you turn them sideways and utilize some of the green space, you might create, might be a better, might not be the look you're looking for, but it might be the, uh, most beneficial use for that property.
Well, we'd, we'd be happy to turn them. I think I was just trying to keep the look for the, for what I felt the city would look good, would look good.
Yeah.
Look good.
We've, uh, and during our discussions, uh, we've had several conversations about this even, um, when you come in here. Uh, that was one of the options and, um, you know, if you go, you know, um, it's not a staff recommendation, but if you go outside of what having a pass through, uh, and it would make, it would make it work better. Um, but it does deter from what exists as the neighborhood.
Right.
Yes, I'm surprised it's zoned our three, being right in the middle of.
Oh, where is it? Everything is.
Everything, everything.
Right in there.
I have a question. If you was to turn them, so we're looking at the parking spots, they're only twelve by twenty-five. So basically you got room for one car in the parking.
We got, we're, we're, we're twenty-five foot setbacks. Yep. So they're twelve feet, twelve feet wide. So you'd have, your har- your cars will be stacked in the turn.
Basically, you'd have to move one car to get them out of the garage or parking on the road.
Yeah.
That's what I'm, my concern would be is parking, people start parking.
Start parking in the road.
In the road.
That would be a major concern as well, yes.
There's no way they could park on the road on Walnut. Now, Locust, they might get by with, but Walnut, it's no way.
But if you was to turn them, you could put parking.
You turn them, you, you could, you could do a lot more with the.
Oh, yeah, they can.
In- in- introduce that option, park, more parking. Again, I just struggled with it, because, you know, I'm, the look and what you want there, but I mean, but if something like this.
They're not gonna match a single family home there anyway.
They're not gonna fit in anyway. I mean, not that they're, I mean, they're not, but they're not gonna go with the flow as, anyway, so I don't think it matters.
As far, as far as the front section, I, I completely understand what you're saying. I think he's more in line of, uh, what he's referencing to is the front facing.
Yeah.
The, the road.
Having a green area.
Versus, uh.
Maybe the one on the corner could have like a jank or something on the side.
We'll definitely work to create a two front.
It needs something there, so that would, that, anything there would be an improvement, but like I said, it was the street and, you know, gotta be in a big flood zone because especially on the, on the Locust side, I mean, Walnut in, you know, the, the city, Miss Johnny equipment down, it's already full and six foot and down there.
On the far end.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it kinda like, you know, go.
Down toward the church.
Down toward the church. And that, that, that's where the, there's a fire hydrant sitting right in there or something.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's what I was actually looking at when I was looking at it, but I mean, I'm, and being when I was taking plans, it makes a big difference to put something there, rather empty lot and then, you know, a couple houses I'd like to knock down for you, but that's not my job. But anyway, yeah.
Well, I, I, I think we've got some good direction to go back and, and, and get something back here that y'all, that we'll, 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 we'll all be happy with. I guess the one, go, go ahead.
I think you got potential to make some nice common areas in all the tenants.
We do.
If you turn it sideways.
Yeah, I mean, and I've got a plan already drawn that way.
That's good.
Everybody's, you're trying to get everybody on the same page.
So the lot's basically a hundred foot wide.
But, yeah, yeah, and that's the minimum you're allowed to have. That's the minimum you have to have for multifamily.
Forty-six, so you're, you're still got fifty-four foot from there to put your parking all over.
Yeah, it, 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 it feels a lot better. I mean, that's the way I originally laid it out, but then, you know, part, part of it just to be front facing, you know.
It's special begging out of their parking lot.
We do it right.
Yeah, it'd, it'd be good. It'd be good.
And it's, the drainage, I think, that Robert brought up is another, another question. And so, you know, it's, it's one of those sites that drains really well right now. If you, if, if you look, if you go off the drainage maps and the soils that are out there. Um, and then you look at the impervious area and now all, all this will change as we, as we re- reconfigure it. But I mean, you've just got really, you know, based on the way we model things and looking at the systems we use, I mean, you've got really low drainage coming off the site to begin with. I mean, you got a two-year storm with point oh six cubic feet per second, which is, which is super low. I mean, it's just hard to get, even, even your gonna build, hard to get a post flow below point oh six. I mean, usually we're at least even with one or point, point five, not point oh, oh something.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I think, you know, so we'll, we'll be, we'll be asking for a variance to the stormwater manual. I mean, we, we, we're proposing an underground drainage system. Um, trying to do something we can to catch it. We're permeable driveways. I mean, obviously, when we reconfigure, we'll look at, it'll, it'll
Very good.
Provide some opportunities, but I mean, when it comes back, I still think we'll be struggling to make that, make that drainage.
Hmm, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cole.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I entertain a motion from the title.
I'll make a motion to defer this till next month.
I'll say.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number nine is old business.
There is none.
Number ten is other business.
All right, other business. Uh, thank you, Chairman, once again, for reminding me, uh, of the election officers. So, uh, being our first meeting of the year, uh, and I have to hold an election officers. Um, and I, so, um, I think I'll leave, I don't qualify that, but, uh.
No, I do.
Yes, I was thinking the chairman, though.
Yeah, you can like.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll leave, I'll turn it back over to you.
Like I said, at this time every year, we, we elect new officers. At this time, we elect a chairman, a vice chairman and a secretary.
That's correct.
At this time, uh, it's open for election, for the nomination of the chairman.
I nominate Doug to remain chairman.
Second, wait a second, I do it.
A motion and a second. Any other nominations for chairman? If not, we vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, opposed? Motion carries. Second is the vice chairman. I'll make a motion, Mr. Hunter. I second it.
Yes.
Any other nominations for vice chairman? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. At this time, secretary. I nominate Jennifer Graham. I'll second it. And have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Wait a minute, wait a minute. Any other nominations for secretary?
Who's second? Who's second in that? Mr. Hunter? Mr. Hunter?
If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank y'all.
Uh, there's one other piece of other business that, uh, I'd like to add, uh, both about in the front. Um, and I'll kinda give you a rundown. I provided two documents to y'all. Uh, one is floodplain drafted, per the comments here that I drafted, so, um, if you have any questions on these comments, please feel free to ask. And the comments are located out to the side. Uh, that's been added into the document that you have ready.
Okay.
So, the document that I'm asking you to recommend to the city commission would be this document, that comment, the commentary, I just wanted to provide both of those to y'all. Um, this came to us through, uh, PMA. Um, they, they perform an audit on municipalities and counties to make sure that they're following the guidelines, which is, uh, required, uh, to be in the insurance program. And we are, uh, we have been. Um, and, uh, during their audit, they found some, um, minuscule things, uh, in our zoning ordinance that need to be corrected, uh, to be fully compliant with very new, uh, regulations, which didn't change, didn't change any uh, rainfall event, it didn't change any, uh, procedures per se. It was just more or less, uh, grammatical, uh, and some citations were corrected, uh, in the update that you have before you. Um, the major addition, uh, will be at the very, uh, end of the document and, uh, sorry, I didn't have these pages. Um, so we're looking at the, uh, you'll go to, not the last page, but page right before it, that's the box right here. Uh, so, um, as you know, in our zoning ordinance, we've got the floodplain ordinance, it's at the, um, section eight point one or two. Um, and we have no different procedures for them. So, if you go up to the front of the zoning ordinance, all the appeals procedures apply to everything down the, uh, where it'd be a zoning amendment. Uh, whatever the case may be, uh, it's all applicable to the entire document. Uh, they wanted that included into the floodplain ordinance. And there was some miscommunication, I think, between myself and, uh, the state floodplain manager. Um, but irregardless, what you have in front of you is included all of the language that they, uh, needed to have in there. And, um, the biggest section being the variance. So, now, uh, if this gets approval, uh, if it's a recommendation, recommendation to the city commission, the city commission approves it, it goes in our document. Now you have the variance, uh, basically copied and pasted from the top of the zoning ordinance, from the first, front of the zoning ordinance to, in, to be included into the floodplain ordinance. Uh, that's really the major change that you had there. And like I said, there were some citations and different things. I would, uh, like to defer to Cory and let her speak just a little bit, uh, more to rip the reasons before you then that.
Yes, so basically this is, um, like Robert said, coming from the state. They, they reviewed our zoning, or our floodplain management ordinance and then gave some recommendations. There was some confusion of which one was the right one that they reviewed. I'm not sure that they understood that our floodplain management was part of our zoning ordinance altogether. Um, but in any event, this has already been, if they zoning text change, because it's part of our zoning amendment altogether. It's already been before the, the city commission one time, but you know, any zoning text change has to be approved by y'all. Um, and so we are kinda doing it backwards because we have a compliance date at the end of January. So, we're asking for you to recommend the whole new version, if you will, of the floodplain management so that we can send it to the city commission for a second reading. Um, and that should put us in compliance. Like Robert said, there's no major changes in there. It's just to make sure that we've crossed our Ts and dotted our Is and we're in full compliance with the state, so.
That's correct.
But.
Which we don't really have a choice.
Yeah, very good.
But that was the other piece of, uh, business that I wanted to add to the agenda. And like I said, if you have any questions on that, I've included both documents. I mean, even after the meeting, just feel free to give me a call, we can still, but, um, the only major addition was the variance fill process. It's added to the end of the document that is already in our zoning ordinance at the front of the document.
Just had to relocate.
Well, we didn't relocate, we just left it there and put it here.
We did.
And that, that's been, we've just, we've all been trying to get on the same page. And so that's maybe very much overkill, but we'd like to do it anyway.
Yes, that's fine. And, and that puts us, uh, in full compliance with the NFIP regulation, regulations. And in order to be part of the NFIP, uh, we have to maintain compliance with the state standards, so, uh, that's where we're at tonight. Uh, and all I'm asking the board to do is just, uh, give us a favorable recommendation to the city commission.
Very good.
Will I make a motion? We recommend this, these changes to the city commission.
Have a motion? And a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number eleven, board and staff comments?
Do you have one other thing I'd like to add? Um, so I think at our last meeting, um, there was some discussion about parking, uh, over here. Um, I have, uh, since reached out to the. I have since reached out to the owner and advised the owner, and I'm going to do that in formal letter tomorrow, of the requirements for the new business that's going in over there. Okay. So we have a section in our zoning ordinance, or subdivision regents, that call for a surety, that's a bond, in essence, that basically establishes a monetary amount that the city holds, with 30% addition to the remainder of the construction, or in case we have to do the work. The, both, what I know thus far is, conversation took place today and is still moving forward, but once again, it's in kind of a limbo area. And I don't think it's the control of the owner, nor is the control of the adjacent building owner. It's kind of in a legal field at this point. But irregardless, we are requiring that the owner submit a surety with 30% added, and the city holds that until that project is completed. And our subdivision regents will allow us to do that in place of unforeseen circumstances that the parking lot or the landscaping can't be completed. We, we applied that in the past, and it is part of our rules and regulations in the sub-rig, as well as our zoning. That being said, I just want to bring that to the board. We are giving a surety in the amount for the remainder of the construction, and an additional 30% will be added, that the city will hold until that parking lot is finished, and if not finished, then we will do the work at their cost. I just wanted to let the board.
And I guess there's some kind of timeline on that?
Six months.
Six-month timeline, yes.
It can be renewed.
It can be renewed, but it's a six-month timeline.
Well, this other, this other business, and is it, is it, it's not going to be able open until we do this?
It can open. It can open under the criteria for the surety bond. However, that being said, there's parking that the city owns directly behind there that can be associated with the parking of that while this is under.
We're talking about, we're talking about behind the bank?
That's correct, yes.
So the business cannot open without the surety bond, no?
The business cannot open without a surety bond. They had two options, buyer sub-rigs. You either complete, or you post a surety bond to give us satisfaction that it will be completed. And once again, that six-month time period, it can be renewed. I can't recall how many times it can be renewed. It's several times.
Does it come back to the planning commission?
I don't know that it comes to the planning commission at all.
It don't, I don't believe.
It should.
The surety bond, when I get that surety bond, though, I will make sure that you each have a copy of that, whether it be on the agenda or not, I will make sure it's the planning commission, because y'all wrote on the site plan. So I would like for y'all to have that, at least a copy of that documentation.
Just to keep it looking like the Pope.
Yeah, I know, for one, I get a lot of feedback on this. I don't know about other board members, but we get a lot of feedback on this. And it's simply because, I don't know whether who it is or what's going on with that, but you know, the only thing I ever say, I think, I think it's a legal issue, and I leave it at that, you know, and stuff. But we do get a lot of feedback, because we plant, we plant some people's feet to the fire on.
And we did, but we also offered them the opportunity for a surety bond, if.
We did.
We did.
We did.
So we offered them the same option we're offering this person.
We did, we did, we did do that. We sort of did.
I have a question on the surety bond, this might be, it's kind of like a retainage, does both parties have to sign off before the bond can be used?
We hadn't seen the bond yet.
We haven't seen the bond yet.
I think they're trying to figure out what the total amount is, and they're working on that, right?
It's not like a destructing retainage, both parties, so one can't end it without the other's approval, so I don't.
Probably sold.
That's correct, yes, sir. I think, I think it requires, I think it requires both, both cities, both parties involved in the surety.
Sign check.
But I just want to make y'all aware of that, because I know it was discussed, and for anybody that questions that, this is not the first time it was applied, it was applied in that other scenario, and they couldn't, they, that entity could not provide the surety bond. So it was, it was, that option was made available to.
It was, I remember.
But it will be coming, I will make sure that y'all get a copy of the documentation once it comes across my desk, and it should be forthcoming. The insurance company, the owner's insurance company is actually requesting the I drafted formal letter, which I'm doing. And I'm going to send that out to them, and then they will be forthcoming with the surety amount, which will be kept until completion.
Aye. Good. No citizens' comments. Number 13, I hear a motion for a adjournment. Make a motion, there's our motion. Second?
I get it.
Adjournment. Thank y'all.